Whatever you do, roll call. Pledge to the flag, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in its cause.
All right, so entertain a motion for the minutes, approval of the minutes from the last meeting.
I move to approve.
Is there a second? Roll call vote, please.
Mr. Cameron.
Aye.
Mr. Bowman.
Aye.
Mr. Kelly.
Aye.
Mr. Flott.
Aye.
Excellent, thank you. Okay, we're at the point of visitors and communications, we have a proclamation for Bike Month. Shall we read that? I shall read the proclamation. Whereas the bicycle is an economical, healthy, convenient, environmentally sound form of transportation and an excellent tool for recreation and enjoyment of Fort Thomas scenic beauty, and whereas throughout the month of May, the residents of Fort Thomas and its visitors will experience the joys of bicycling through educational programs, races, commuting events, charity events, or by simply getting out and going for a ride, and whereas the Fort Thomas's road and trail system attracts bicyclists each year, providing economic health, transportation, tourism, and scenic benefits, and whereas creating a bicycle-friendly community has been shown to improve citizens' health, well-being, and quality of life, growing the economy of Fort Thomas, attracting business dollars, improving traffic safety, supporting student learning outcomes, and reducing pollution, congestion, and wear and tear on our streets and roads, and whereas many local bicycle clubs and organizations, the League of American Bicycleists, schools, parks, and recreation departments, police departments, public health districts, hospitals, companies, and civic groups will be promoting bicycling during the month of May 2018, and whereas these groups are also promoting bicycle tourism year-round to attract more visitors to enjoy local restaurants, retail establishments, and cultural and scenic attractions, and whereas these groups are also promoting greater public awareness of bicycle operation and safety education in an effort to reduce collisions, injuries, fatalities, and improve health and safety for everyone on the road, now therefore I, Eric Haas, mayor of the city of Fort Thomas, do hereby proclaim May 2018 as Bike Month in Fort Thomas, and I urge all residents to join me in this special observance and witness to whereof I set my hand here of our Lord. All right, great, it's Bicycle Month. I love bicycles. Is that awesome?
And actually, I would add, we had the Sears-Schucker Bicycle Ride, which is a duplicate of an event from our Sesquicentennial. See how easy you can say that now?
Yeah, right.
And also, there's a local group that has a ride to work, and forgive me for the date, it might be this Friday, right?
I think it's tomorrow, right?
Is it tomorrow?
It was last Friday, got rescheduled for tomorrow.
Okay. There you go.
Cool.
So I'll have to remember when my bike comes.
That's awesome. That's awesome. Okay, is there anyone who would like to address council for any reason?
You've got to.
Sure, come on up, state your name and address for the record.
My name is Barry Anderson. I reside at 227 Rosemont Avenue, been a resident of Fort Thomas since 1975. I'm here today to request on a temporary basis a trial of modifying one or two of the existing tennis courts for use in pickleball play, and I have little packets and the right number, and may I just distribute those?
Sure, absolutely. So, pickleball.
This is not done like this.
Do you play?
It's awesome. It's fun.
What?
Lifetime sport.
What was the new thing we're doing that the Boy Scout was doing last month?
Gaga.
Gaga ball, now pickleball?
Yeah.
I'm going Gaga over pickleball.
Anybody else?
Sure.
If I might just read from this real briefly, it's just on the front page. I wrote here, tennis courts throughout the United States are often underutilized, nor do the Kentuckys no exception. I've been monitoring the courts at Tower Park and finding them largely empty. I went last Friday and found them empty. I went to the pickleball courts in Newtown, which are brand-new courts that the city put in based on some research they did on the both economic and social advantages of doing that. There were about a dozen people there playing on Friday at nine o'clock in the morning. There's high demand in the area for pickleball courts, there aren't a lot of them around. There are some indoor courts, Town and Country, Dan Wilder has indoor play on, I think it's Tuesdays and Thursdays from certain hours, and what they do is just simply repurpose basketball courts, sort of turn a couple on their sides with portable nets, and you're good to go. There is another county or city park somewhere in northern Kentucky where they've done essentially what I'm asking, which is to just paint some lines down on an existing tennis court, and it can become a pickleball court. It's played on a badminton-sized court with a tennis net lowered to 34 inches instead of the tennis 36. It could be played on a temporary trial basis with just the regular tennis height. Most of you, some of you may know the center strap can just be kind of pulled and it lower it down.
If you want to make it really good for pickleball, there's a way to put straps on the two ends,
which would be slightly inside and pull that down, and then you have an official pickleball court. So on a temporary basis, all that would have to happen is some lines be put in place to delineate a pickleball course, court. They could be put down with tape, which would probably be the least permanent kind of activity, or they could be painted. There's a gentleman that I ran into, and there's a whole bunch of resources here, I didn't end up reading this, but that's all right, I guess. I've got a bunch of resources in the back here, and there's a gentleman that I ran into who's the U.S. Pickleball Association. Yes, there is such a thing, and people have tournaments throughout the country. I was able to be down in Naples, Florida, and they had a big national tournament. I have a link in the back to Brian Williams talking about pickleball being the fastest running sport in America. It's, again, it's relatively easy to pick up.
I brought.
So it's sort of like a racquetball paddle, but no net, and the ball looks like it wouldn't hurt you, and it doesn't, even if it hits you as hard as somebody can hit it, you know, the wiffle keeps it slow. So, anywhere from $20 to $120, depending on how silly you are.
Yeah.
That works just fine. So it's real easy to learn and has become very, very popular. My brother-in-law plays on five days a week, he's obviously retired. The business of changing a tennis court to a pickleball court, as I said, is, can be pretty easy. If it does what I think it will do, which is to draw people to Fort Thomas to play on the courts that are now not used an awful lot, you could move and make one tennis court for pickleball courts, as crazy as that sounds, but it, again, in the diagrams in here, it will show how that can be done. The only disadvantage that I could figure out on maybe doing a temporary trial on this is if you make one tennis court and one pickleball court, you're not utilizing the space very efficiently. But again, my sense is the city might want to just do this on a trial basis and see how it works, see if you generate any complaints from tennis players. I don't know, I don't know if there's any other contractual things that you're committed to with the tennis courts.
So there's not really a way to convert it from one back to the other?
Yes, there is.
But not on a daily basis? Like if somebody wants to play?
Well, they could.
Not really?
They could, all they'd have to do is loosen the straps.
But you'd, but it would be a single pickleball court or a single tennis court?
Correct.
So like you'd stripe it in a different color or something?
Correct.
Okay.
And those exist, and you know, it can be a little confusing to have the different lines, but everybody adjusts, and you know where things should be.
Right.
So yeah, it could be just a question of tightening the straps, loosening the straps.
Yeah.
That's all. So really, the only investment is just putting some stripes down.
I'm sure it's the tennis racket manufacturers that came up with pickleball, since tennis was getting less popular, and let's make a, let's make an easier one so we can sell more stuff. My only concern at this point is I know that the schools use the tennis courts for tournaments or whatever. Do you know if they use all the courts, or do they use?
They, they do use all the courts, however, we've actually had a recent request for pickleball, and we've actually looked into the idea of using the lower court, which is the least used for tennis, it's selected last typically.
Okay.
Or for people like me that want to go high because I'm not very good at tennis, so...
Well, you love pickleball.
Yeah. And, and so we have entertained the possibility of putting stripes on there. The second thing is, is we are actually looking at upgrading that facility and working with the school on, on doing that, and at that time, we could look at whether we want to do something more permanent, but certainly on a temporary basis, we could accommodate it, perhaps on the two lower courts.
Yeah, that's, was my thought as well. So, I don't know if this needs consideration, what the next step is. I'm available as a resource. There's a gentleman whose contact information I put down, who's, as I said, the U.S. Pickleball Association Cincinnati ambassador. I also put down contact information, that same gentleman actually has a business where he stripes, he put paint stripes down on existing courts for, I think, $450. City could possibly, I mean, it's just some tape and some paint, it's not brain surgery.
Sure.
And it's just a few lines. I really do think that you will see an influx of people come to use the courts. As I said, the courts in Newtown are almost always have people on them. You have the advantage of lights as well, I don't know what the schedule is on those. Any questions? Anything I'm omitting?
Theoretically, they could be striped, the existing tennis courts could be striped for pickleball and still used by the tennis people.
Correct. Tennis people may not be particularly happy to have the extra visual noise, I don't know. The pickleball court, as it shows in the diagram, sits inside the tennis court, so that shows how it sits in there. And again, they're relatively small. It's a great game for older Americans, because you don't have to run as far, it's relatively quick back and forth.
So it's halfway between ping pong and tennis?
Yeah, sort of a love child of badminton, ping pong, and racquetball.
Okay.
It's weird.
It's faster than badminton, and that was, those birdies go slow.
Right, right.
Okay.
Yeah, we've actually, we've actually looked in, we're, we're looking at doing improvements in our basketball courts and resurfacing wise, and the tennis courts, and we have our people in our recreation looking at the cost of converting the two lower courts to be multi-use with the pickleball and tennis.
Right.
Because it is just a striping, it does take away from the tennis experience a little bit, because there's striping interior to that. The separation works though, because they sit lower and they're away from the other four courts, so...
And then, and if it does get very popular, we could convert it just to pickleball courts and maybe add more?
If we had the demand higher than the tennis demand, yeah.
Sure.
We have a couple leagues, and we have some regular unofficial leagues where people meet every week and play, but there's not, other than when the school's using it, there's typically not scheduled for all six courts to be in active use, so...
The folks at Newtown, this Clear Creek, Clear Creek Park, they actually now have a pickleball league, and it's reserved, you know, at different times.
That's great.
So there's actually a wait course. I don't know if there's anything else I can do, or I've got my contact information, I'd love to be able to merge it.
I can follow up with you and let you know where we are with this.
Yeah.
I appreciate you coming to council and sharing this, this is great information.
I appreciate you hearing me out.
Sure.
If you had something?
Absolutely.
Are these Dick's, like, are the major sporting goods places that handling the paddles and balls in now?
They do and they don't. They have a couple, you know, they have a whole slew of tennis rackets, and somebody there thought, pickleball, yeah, yeah, we got a couple, like a lot of things in life now, online works real well.
Yeah.
This was sort of middle-of-the-road, $40 paddle that will last longer than I would possibly. You know, the balls are cheap, and it's fun.
Yeah, we should do it.
Great.
We should do it.
Thank you so much.
Thank you for that.
Appreciate it.
That's a good point, though, to make sure that putting that extra striping on that violates some high school athletic rules.
Yeah, yeah.
If it was a different color, maybe it would, you know, be something...
People are used to doing that with soccer and football, you have yellow lights, or yellow lines and white lines, and you have, just have to figure out which lines you're going with. Anyone else like to address council?
I'm glad to also hear the gentleman out bringing those.
Yes.
Yeah.
All right.
How much time do you got?
Did I twist your arm or not?
I've got town ordinances to read.
I saw that. Truth be told, I told the chief, I was actually on my way to one of our new, my new favorite Fort Thomas businesses, Fort Thomas Ice Cream, and thought I'd stop here and visit my holding stomping grounds, so really, just loved to check in, see how the city's doing. I think it's being run very well. Thank you, council, for serving, and I want to remind everybody and encourage them to exercise their right to vote tomorrow in the primary. So, thank you, thank you all for what you do.
That's right, the primary is tomorrow, isn't it?
Right.
That's correct. We shall do that. Yeah, and we do have a lot of ones. This is the first time I recall ever beyond council that we had used eight-and-a-half-by-fourteen paper to fit all the stuff on here, so we got a lot of stuff going, so let's move along. We have two...
Mayor, we've got another guest here.
Oh.
Just question, would it be okay to move this resolution up in order, let him get an exit of the bond resolution?
No, I don't know.
Hang around.
Absolutely, we can do that.
Okay.
So we're going to jump down to new business, consideration of extension of development agreement, real estate transfer agreement, and a consideration of the bond, however that's worded.
Resolution.
Bond resolution. Okay. I don't know where they are. You got them?
Yeah.
Okay. So basically, you want to fill everybody in on this, it's just a...
I'll defer to...
Just another delay. Some of these lawyers can't get stuff done fast enough, that's what it is, right?
I'm Jim Parsons with the community in Cleat Camp, I represent the developer on this project, but again, we do, the last extension you granted, we do appreciate that, was closing by May 31st. We are actively in the middle of closing the transaction, as we recall, now with the lender, but we're certainly not going to make the May 31st date, so we would need to have the extension of the transfer agreement and the development agreement. I put in to July 15th, which should give us more than enough time, but we are actively working on closing. There are some issues we're still working through with the lender, nothing that's insurmountable, but there are a number of due diligence items that we have to get taken care of. We're working with, actively with Ron, the city administrator on the plat, the final plat that's going to be recorded, so we can then move forward with the closing and do that, but that's what's taking the time.
Sure.
On this particular situation, so in addition to that, just for informational purposes, we always intended to form a specific limited liability company for this particular project, so not only does the agreement you have in front of you reference the fact that we're extending the date, but we're also then referencing the fact that Alexander Circle LLC is being replaced in the name of Bloomingville Shaw Investments LLC.
Okay.
That entity is controlled by Bloomingville Shaw, it's basically 80% of it is owned by the members of Bloomingville Shaw, and it's very, very common for when you get close to these real estate deals, they create a specific liability for that specific project, and that's what's going on here. So those are the two amendments for the second amendment to the real estate transfer agreement, the third amendment to the development agreement. Those are the, those are the provisions relative to that.
Okay, great, thank you. Does anybody have any questions?
Does that take emotional change then?
Yes.
I'll move.
Is there a second?
Second.
Is there any further discussion? Are you doing both? Did you move for both or just one?
Well, just the one, I guess.
The second amendment, okay.
Well, all amendments, all amendments that are corresponding to change the date.
Okay, so there's two of them, there's the second amendment and the third amendment.
Yeah, but they're all doing the same thing, change the date.
That's correct.
Yeah, so...
It's all for all of them, yeah.
The motion is for all of them, the second is for all of them.
There's two of them.
There's two.
For both of them.
There are two amendments, there's one resolution. Right.
So I think the motion, we should separate out. I think we can do the second and third in one motion, and I think we would do the resolution in a separate motion.
The bond resolution.
Yes.
Yes, agreed, yeah.
Okay.
So I was making the motion on the amendments.
Second and third amendments.
Which is what we just discussed, yeah.
Okay, second and third amendments have been moved, and second, is there further discussion? Any questions?
Only question I have is, who's the other 20%? You know, if the new entity name is 80% Bloomingville Shaw, who's the rest?
They have some other partners that are part of a limited liability company. I can, I think we provided some information to the city attorney relative to that, so...
Okay.
The development agreement itself indicates that the Bloomingville Shaw could, could assign to a new entity as long as it was controlling it for a certain...
All right, any other questions? Okay, roll call vote, please.
Mr. Cameron.
Aye.
Mr. Bowman.
Aye.
Ms. Kelly.
Aye.
Mr. Peter.
Aye.
Mr. Flott.
Aye.
Excellent, okay, so now we want to jump down to the resolution, which is, where is that? There we have that, someplace there.
RO2.
Okay, resolution RO2 2018, if you want to screen through that.
Resolution RO2 2018, a resolution of the city of Fort Thomas, city of Fort Thomas, Kentucky, authorizing the issuance of up to $7 million maximum aggregate principal amount taxable industrial building revenue bond, Series 2018A, and $2 million maximum aggregate principal amount taxable industrial building revenue bond, Series 2018B, and resolution to assist Alexander Circle LLC or assigns to finance the acquisition, construction, and equipping of an industrial building facility located within the city of Fort Thomas, Kentucky, and to improve said facility, authorizing the issuance of additional bonds, providing for the pledge of revenues for the next, for the payment of said bonds, authorizing a lease agreement between the city of Fort Thomas, Kentucky, and Alexander Circle LLC, or assigns with respect to the facility, the agreement, authorizing a springing executory interest deed, authorizing a trust and venture appropriate for the protection and disposition of such revenues, and further to secure the payment of said bonds, authorizing a bond purchase agreement, authorizing a fee and leasehold mortgage, security agreement, and fixture financing statement, and authorizing a home office payment agreement.
I missed that, could you repeat that, please?
Yeah.
Sorry, all right. I'll entertain a motion.
Move to approve.
Okay, is there a second?
Second.
Any...
Just for promotional purposes for the public, these bonds are being issued by the city, but they are private activity bonds, and the city, the resolution itself so indicates, this is not a debt of the city.
Right.
This is a debt of the developer, and they'll be totally responsible for paying the bonds. The city will have no financial obligation relative to this.
Thanks for clarifying that again, Jim, I appreciate that. Any other comments or questions?
Just one question, Jim. Why are there two series of bonds?
You know, the first series will be tied basically to the loan, in this case, so the second series will be really secured by, really paid by the type of payment move taxes and things, so that's how that's structured, the $7 million series is really tied to the loan. In this case, the lender is Stockyards Banking, and so that's the reason why it's structured that way.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Roll call vote, please.
Mr. Cameron.
Aye.
Mr. Bowman.
Aye.
Ms. Kelly.
Aye.
Mr. Peter.
Aye.
Mr. Flott.
Aye.
Does she have to sign the other ones too?
No.
Okay.
Is there going to be a payment on the tennis agreement too?
There is.
Yeah, she wants a copy of it.
That's already been approved, that's already incorporated into the development agreement, it's in there, and it's in the bonds we issued, subject to complying with that.
There's another page.
To what?
It's another page.
To what?
I need to sign, and that, it's...
I can pick up the bond resolution later, have them do it.
Here's a copy. You're almost done, right here.
Okay.
Let me give you the...
That's right. Appreciate you removing that.
There's one copy.
Sure.
You can have them sign two originals, and then just return that one back, and Eric can sign that.
We'll do that.
Yeah.
I would be, I'll, we, the bond resolution actually has to be public, if there's cases that have to...
Okay. Great, thanks, Jim. That's the resolution. Thank you very much, okay. Now, back to officers, reports of officers, fire department monthly report, Chief Bailey.
Thank you, Mayor Haas, and board of council members. I really don't have anything to add to the monthly report that was mailed out in your packets. Only thing I would like to just mention to you is that this week is National Emergency Medical Services Week in the nation, and this year, the theme is EMS Strong, Stronger Together. So again, just the working relationship that our people have with all entities to take care of the citizens and take care of the individuals we come into contact with every day, all the way up to the defensive care given at the hospital, kind of pulls that whole system together, kind of the chain of survival, the chain of command, so, or survival. So again, if you have an opportunity to see any of our people this week, compliment them on what they do, because you know how I feel, they're the best in the business, and they do a great job day in and day out, and so again, just wanted to kind of make sure everybody knew that it was EMS week, and again, we're real proud of our people and what they do for our citizens of Fort Thomas. So with that being said, I'll be glad to answer any questions council may have in regard to the fire department.
My grandson still talks about it every single day, about coming up to the fire department.
They're welcome anytime.
Seriously, that was awesome.
Now, you know, we went right from winter to summer, so obviously, the doors are open every day, just to get some coolness in there, because it's hot in my office, so anyway, you know, it's, the doors are open, and anybody is welcome anytime, and we love all ages.
That's great, thank you. Any questions for the chief?
I think just one comment, chief, and that's Chris Ross, you have it here in the report.
Yeah.
I think it's good to call that.
Yeah, and he's here, and it is. He did a wonderful job with all the people that helped on that Earth Day. Again, Chris continues to help Jeff Moore and those guys and create those trails in Highland Park area, and again, as he did in Tower Park and other places, he's done that for a number of years with my sons, et cetera. So again, just continues to do a great job, I had some pictures there that Chris shared with me, I want to share with you all, and again, as you saw, it was important enough to put that in the report, and I thank you for bringing that up, with Chris being here, again, just one of the people, like I said, that I compliment a lot of every day, so again, it was a great, I think it was a good, Ron will probably attest, Mr. Dill will probably attest, that it was a good, good weekend there and got a lot of work done.
It was fun, yep. Any other questions or comments?
Thank you, Mr. Cameron.
Move to receive and file.
Is there a second?
Second.
Roll call vote, please.
Mr. Cameron.
Aye.
Mr. Bowman.
Aye.
Ms. Kelly.
Aye.
Mr. Peter.
Aye.
Mr. Flott.
Aye.
Excellent, police department report, Chief Bailey.
Thank you, Mayor Haas, and thank you, council members. I'm just going to keep mine very brief, since Commissioner Lampy kind of took a lot of our time.
Very good.
She's kidding, sir.
Very good.
Actually, I have nothing new to pass on for the monthly report for April, but if there's any questions, I will try to answer them for you. And please take time, if you haven't, to take a good look at the report, because the detectives put together a nice report.
Yeah.
Officer Hoffman put together a really nice report also, and there's some neat things in there about the drug takeback day that took place in April twenty eighth.
Yeah. Very nice.
That's all I have, though.
All right. Any questions for the chief? Undertain a motion.
Move to receive and file.
Roll call, please.
Mr. Cameron.
Aye.
Mr. Bowman.
Aye.
Ms. Kelly.
Aye.
Mr. Peterman.
Aye.
Mr. Slatter.
Aye.
Okay, City Administrators Report, Mr. Dill.
I just have a couple of updates on projects and community events. The Burnet Ridge Stabilization Project is underway. In fact, the Culver Extension is in place. If you've been down there, that is quite a hole in the ground. It is.
So you're getting dirt soon?
Uh, yeah, they'll be ready for dirt soon. The weather's been somewhat cooperative, but they, the hard part's done, so they have backfill to take place there. They're building the wing walls now, so there'll be a couple more weeks with decent weather in there, but that project is under control at this point, because it's stabilized, so that's the most important thing. And then it'll be completed in the next couple of weeks. The main Avenue Stabilization Project took place last week. We worked with the contractor, did a little bit of cost savings, working with our general services crew. That's the one where they drilled the rails into the bedrock. That process took a couple of days, and we did a lot of the backfill on that project, and completed it last week. So that was a three-day project that was completed under tough circumstances, because that's a one-man road down there. So, we applaud the residents for working with us, and our safety departments for being aware of, of the changes there. So that one went off without a hitch. And then the last project I want to comment on is the mess hall armory. We had a pre-construction meeting on the seventeenth of April. HDC's the contractor on that, and they're scheduled to begin work in the first week in June. So, we're not positive of the order of the process. If you recall, they're doing the armory and the mess hall. They are very aware, through the pre-construction meeting, of the need to deal with the mess hall, in terms of the rental and setting of scaffolding, and they've promised to work with us. We made that very clear when we bid the project for our renters and brides-to-be to not be upset with scaffolding across the front of the building for their pictures. So, they'll be working with us, and they're aware of our, our Fourth of July events and so forth, so. Just a couple of city events, the, the yard sale was this weekend. We had over two hundred residents that signed up in advance, and a number more that took place on their own. So that event has grown each year, and is very, very successful. I was not here, but I heard the traffic was, and use of, of the opportunity was obvious, so that's a good thing. Obviously, our residents appreciate that. I mentioned the bicycle ride, referenced the Earth Day. We had great volunteers working in Highland Park, and the Fort Thomas Conservancy worked with the Tree Commission and the staff to put on a great day, and they had beautiful weather on Earth Day for all the events in Tower Park, it was well-attended as well, so, great event. And other than that, we're working on budget development, and we have a finance committee scheduled to meet next week, and you all will see budget at your next meeting, which, by the way, is the first Monday in New Year. So we have two meetings in June to deal with our budget. And I just wanted to remind everyone and on council and staff of our June twenty-fifth date for our next public meeting on the visioning process, and our community plan, where we'll share all of our findings from each committee with our public with regard to the exploration phase. So, committees have been working diligently, great momentum, great conversations. It's going to be exciting to share with everybody to, if you haven't had an opportunity to be around other committees, how much work they've done, so we're excited to present that on the twenty-fifth.
And speaking of other meetings, I'll be here for the first meeting in June, but not for the second meeting, so I hope everybody else can come, so we have a forum to take care of the budget issues. But I will be here on the Monday for the planning.
Finance meeting is what day?
Next, Wednesday.
Next.
Wednesday at noon. Are you available?
Yeah.
Good. And then June second, you have that on your calendar?
I do.
Good. All right.
I did have one other thing.
Sure.
I forgot, the farmer's market starts on June sixth.
Oh, yeah.
And, and it is relocated this year. It's actually going to be in Tower Park. We had a little mix-up on the location, they were moving, but we ended up in Tower Park, and we think it'll fit nicely. You know, we in the parking lot by the pickleball courts. And, so Wednesday may not be a good day, even if we get them striped, but that runs from three o'clock to seven, or three-thirty to seven, I believe. But it'll, it'll be housed opposite the armory in that parking lot by the tennis courts, and we think it'll fit nicely there.
When does that start?
June sixth.
June sixth.
Okay. Wednesday afternoon.
Great.
Wednesday finance meeting.
Next Wednesday.
Wednesday, noon.
I don't know. We'll get to that later, but I'm not going to. I don't expect, I just totally was thinking it was next week, but, okay, I'll call you by the telephone.
Okay.
Okay, just a minute.
All right. Down to unfinished business, report from Law, Labor, and License Committee, deer contraception.
Update, yeah, right update.
You want to go, you want to take a shot at it?
The Law, Labor, and License Committee met today before council at six fifteen to discuss the deer management program in the city. As you may recall, approximately three, four months ago, we received, the city received several donations to potentially fund a deer sterilization program, or deer contraceptive program in the city. At that point, the committee took it under our advisement to kind of look further into it. What's this going to actually get to entail? Is this possible in the city? Is it feasible? So as part of that, Ron, city staff, reached out to numerous experts, national and regional experts. They met with Department of Fish and Wildlife, as well as an expert in Connecticut. So what was determined was that to do a deer contraceptive program in Kentucky would require a program that was approved by Fish and Wildlife Department, and that would also include the need to tag the deer, which would lead you to having to, I guess, trinkleize the deer, insert the ear tag or neck tag on the deer. So because of that, we thought that it's probably not feasible to implement that program in Fort Thomas, given the costs associated with that. Additionally, we also discussed potential deer sterilization. That was priced at about a thousand dollars per deer, and that is going to require additional research by city staff, and we're going to look into that and bring that back to the committee at a future time point. But I think that's just about everything.
Well done. Yes. Anything to add?
I don't think so.
All right.
Does anybody have any questions?
So there's no action necessary to take at this point?
No action necessary, we'll be following.
Doing more investigation.
Will those funds continue to be escrowed until the next?
Well, I guess that's a pleasure, council. I mean, at this point, it was taken under the idea that it would be used for the contraceptive program, which we don't think is going to be, you know, feasible, so whether we reimburse those individuals upfront, or maintain that fund until, you know, there's another opportunity, but that's, that's the terms in which it was given to the city, was for contraception.
And we ought to ask them, if they, you know, we can, like Dave said, if we're looking into sterilization, it's a.
We have the.
Actually, if they want to leave it there, that's fine, but otherwise, you're right, it's.
I mean, we can send a, a letter. There's not that many. We can send a letter just, you know, summarizing where we are, and asking if they want to refund it, if they want to maintain it in a fund.
I think that would be good, because, yes, it was originally contraception, and if we do, basically, just your report was very clear, if a letter to that says that we don't believe contraception is a viable option at this time, however, sterilization, maybe we're researching further, we'd like to offer your money back if you want it back now, or if you'd like to keep it in for the potential of a sterilization program.
To be revisited at such and such a date?
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
All right.
That's, I think we owe it to them for that purpose, so, so we, the staff can take care of it.
Good. Thank you. Okay, so now we're down to new business consideration in the animal control interlocal agreement. Speaking of animal control, yeah. That's just put it on animal control, let them take care of it, yes, okay.
Mr. E. Walden will speak to that.
Okay.
He serves on the board, on behalf of the city.
Yes, I, I inherited the, the mantle as animal control quasi-director from Ron when I took over as Assistant to the C A O. And, long story short on this one, when I took over, we had our first meeting, and Silver Grove expressed interest in possibly lessening their contribution. I think, at, at the time, the original contributions were set up, there were, there were some issues in Silver Grove. I think they had an inordinate amount of cats. It, it was really quite a difficult situation, which has since been brought under control, and they, they were paying significantly more than, than they were really utilizing. So, we had shopped around, specifically to Wilder and California, Kentucky, to see if somebody would like to join. We had absolutely no luck whatsoever, until lately, Wilder has seemed to have had a rash of animal control-type issues, and it just sort of worked that Wilder asked what the conditions were for joining, and if there was any potential room. We asked Silver Grove, they were overjoyed to spend less money on it, and it just simply came together. We added Wilder, we recalculated all the percentages, effectively split what Silver Grove contributed, and it, it, it's been a win-win for everybody. So this really, all this really does is, the first part includes Wilder in anything that lists the cities, and the Exhibit A at the back has Silver Grove's contribution from ten to five percent, and allocates that other five to Wilder.
So Terry's territory has got bigger, kind of, more or less?
It, it did, for all intents and purposes, but she, we've had a community cat program in place for the last year or so, basically, a trap neutering release, a T and R program, and she's actually picked up a few cats in Wilder, so she's just sort of, sort of semi-patrolling there anyway. And, and we've had a couple of issues where we helped out Wilder and built them separately, just as, as a friendly gesture, more or less, and with the knowledge that eventually they were going to have to join, and they, they said yes. So, i- it's, it's increased a little bit, but I don't think she's foreseeing spending a significant amount of time there, aside from adding the cats in Wilder to the program.
And theoretically, it would be time to take it away from patrolling in Silver Grove.
Yeah.
Which, the need has lessened there.
Move to approve.
You have a second?
Second.
Um, any questions or concerns? I have, I have just one wordsmithing thing that you don't have to mess with.
Oh, I can.
Maybe next year, Section two.
Yes.
First, each part of this agreement hereby agrees to equally underwrite the cost.
It's not equal.
It's not equal. So just getting rid of the word equally might make it more.
Or just agrees to underwrite the cost.
Underwrite the cost according to funding, funding formula. I mean, when you read the rest of the sentence, it does make sense, but the word equally is probably.
Good catch.
A little bit. Although, if we did that, then everybody else would have to pay more, and then we could pay less, so I was debating whether to bring it up.
Good, good point. Good point.
So, roll call vote, please.
I have one question, sorry, Mayor.
Oh, sure.
So last year, we had annual update from the Animal Control Board. I haven't called a deal on this year. Did we receive one?
Um, I can actually put something together, could I?
I think it's just kind of good to see usage. I mean, I've got a lot of time to cover.
No, I, I, we actually, Terry does provide us with, does provide the board, per se, with regular reports, which I can easily look at forward along and maybe do a little report. I mean, we could potentially get Terry up here as well, which I, has Terry ever been before, council?
She has.
It's been a while.
Really great.
Exactly. Exactly, she does a great job.
The only problem is, there's a lot of cities that remember us to this. If every city asked her to attend, I think that's why we have a board, so I, I think if you can give a report, you know, she doesn't have to go to every city meeting.
That is, that is easy enough?
That was a good question. I'm glad you interrupted it. Okay. Anybody else? Okay, roll call vote.
Mr. Cameron.
Aye.
Mr. Bowman.
Aye.
Ms. Kelly.
Aye.
Mr. Peterman.
Aye.
Mr. Slatter.
Aye.
All right, so now we drop down to Finance Committee Report on Dispersions.
Report of dispersment, April fourteenth through May eighteenth, two thousand eighteen, total of three hundred forty-seven thousand, six hundred sixty-three dollars and sixty-seven cents. Tower Hook Fund, six thousand four hundred seventy dollars and forty-three cents. Club of Works Pay-Off Fund, thirty-six thousand, eight hundred fifty-eight dollars and sixty-six cents. Referring Debt Service Fund, one thousand one hundred forty dollars and eighty-eight cents. CBD Revitalization, one thousand eight hundred seventy-seven dollars and twenty-seven cents. Waste Fees, one hundred and eighty thousand, four hundred fifty-five dollars and forty-seven cents. Felicity Bar Pension Fund, one thousand five hundred eighty-one dollars and fifty-seven cents. Total, five hundred seventy-six thousand, forty-seven dollars and ninety-five cents. Lady Undersigned Members to the Finance Committee recommend that warrant number three seven one one through three eight seven six be approved, and the treasurer be authorized to issue checks for their payment. Mr. Peterman, chairperson, Ms. Kelly, number.
Undertain a motion.
Move to confirm.
Do a second? Oh, okay. I didn't hear you. Roll call vote, please.
Mr. Cameron.
Aye.
Mr. Bowman.
Aye.
Ms. Kelly.
Aye.
Mr. Peterman.
Aye.
Mr. Slatter.
Aye.
Okay, we have a whole slew of ordinances coming up, and they all stem around the first one, which is establishing a code enforcement board. We'll actually be looking for volunteers for a three-member board, but in doing that code enforcement board, we had to amend a number of the other ordinances in order to comply with that. So, we've got a whole list of them here. How about it? Yeah.
Just let me go in for, well, this one has to be approved.
Sure.
So, this is ordinance number oh oh five, two thousand eighteen, ordinance of the City of Fort Thomas, Kentucky, establishing a code enforcement board. The city council pursuant to K R S sixty-five point eight eight oh one to sixty-five point eight eight three nine is creating a code enforcement board. The ordinance provides for a code enforcement officer, a code enforcement board, a hearing officer, issuance of citations, hearings, enforcement, penalties, and liens.
Give approval.
Is there a second? Oh, yeah, this is for approval, so roll call vote, please.
Mr. Cameron.
Aye.
Mr. Bowman.
Aye.
Ms. Kelly.
Aye.
Mr. Peterman.
Aye.
Mr. Slatter.
Aye.
All right, the rest of these ordinances are just first reading, so we don't need to take action on them, but. Sure.
Ordinance O-06, 2018, an ordinance amending the official zoning ordinance of the City of Fort Thomas, Campbell County, Kentucky, being ordinance number O-16, 2007, enacted on May 21st, 2007, Article, Section 9.10F, Application Zoning Regulations, to permit the placement of a detached garage in a side yard.
Actually, that one's not related to this, but... Neither is this second one. The rest of them are, sorry. I was misleading everybody.
Ordinance number O-07, 2018, an ordinance accepting the recommendation of the Fort Thomas Planning Commission submitted in its resolution number Z-01, 2018, and amending the official zoning ordinance of the City of Fort Thomas, Campbell County, Kentucky, being ordinance number O-13, 2012, by changing the zoning district of real estate here and after described in Central Business District CBD to Residential 1 for 26 auto-armed plates. Ordinance number O-08, 2018, an ordinance amending the official code of ordinances of the City of Fort Thomas, Campbell County, Kentucky, Chapter 10, Rules of Construction, Section 10.99, Penalty by changing the penalty clause. This ordinance amends the general penalty. Ordinance number O-09, 2018, an ordinance amending the official zoning ordinance of the City of Fort Thomas, Campbell County, Kentucky, Chapter 16, Zoning Ordinance, Section 16.8, Complaints Regarding Violations by Changing the Penalty Clause. This ordinance amends the complaint procedure for zoning code violations. Ordinance number O-10, 2018, an ordinance amending the official zoning ordinance of the City of Fort Thomas, Campbell County, Kentucky, Chapter 16, Zoning Ordinance, Section 16.9, Penalties by changing the penalty clause. This ordinance amends the penalty for violations of zoning ordinances. Ordinance number O-11, 2018, an ordinance establishing a penalty clause in the official code of ordinances of the City of Fort Thomas, Campbell County, Kentucky, Chapter 50, General Provision, Sections 50.01 through 50.09, Sewer, Stormwater, and Erosion. This ordinance establishes a penalty for violations of Chapter 50. Ordinance number O-12, 2018, an ordinance amending the official code of ordinances of the City of Fort Thomas, Campbell County, Kentucky, Chapter 51, Garbage, Section 51.99, Penalty by changing the penalty clause. This ordinance amends a penalty in regard to violation of garbage ordinances. Ordinance O-13, 2018, an ordinance repealing the official code of ordinances of the City of Fort Thomas, Campbell County, Kentucky, Chapter 95, Health and Safety Noise Control, Section 95.02B, and amending Section 95.02C, Excessive Growth of Weeds and Grass, Accumulation of Rubbish by Changing the Penalty Clause. This ordinance repeals Section 95.02B relating to notice of violation. This ordinance provides for a penalty in regard to excessive growth of weeds, grass, and accumulation of rubbish. Ordinance number O-14, 2018, an ordinance amending the official code of ordinances of the City of Fort Thomas, Campbell County, Kentucky, Chapter 97, Streets and Sidewalks, Section 97.99, Newsracks, Penalty by changing the penalty clause. This ordinance provides for a penalty for violation of news rack ordinance. Ordinance number O-15, 2018, an ordinance establishing a penalty clause for Chapter 153, Swimming Pools by adding Section 153.4 of the Official Code of Ordnances, Fort Thomas, Kentucky. This ordinance establishes a penalty for violation in regard to swimming pools.
Awesome, great job. Those are first readings on all those. The next item is resolution which we've already passed. So now we've got a series of five executive orders, just appointing people to the Renaissance Board, so you can read through those as well.
Executive Order EO-4, 2018, an executive order reappointing Frank Tweedy as a member of the Renaissance Board of the City of Fort Thomas, Campbell County, Kentucky, consenting his term of office. Executive Order EO-5, 2018, an executive order appointing Michelle Knight